Okay, we'll call the February 22nd, 2022 Special Meeting of the Board of Selection to Order.
For the 23rd.
23rd, right. It says right there, 220223. Not too far away. Okay, those who can, please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Sure. The Fledge of Allegiance for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order business tonight is Parks and Rec. Mr. Putman had made us aware quite a while ago he could not make tonight. And Mr. McDowell is going to come on, but he's had a problem or an illness that he can't make it. So, Tom Beebe, who's there, the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission is here to present the budget and take our questions. And Jackie Curry, who's on the board is, Parks, the Parks and Rec Commission is here as well. So, Tom, I'll let you start off with your presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. So, this presentation Dave has put together for the budget review for 2022, 2023. The budget highlights, recommended increase is 1.82%. Director's line reduction is due to the retirement of our present director as of September 9th, 2022. Starting salary for new director budgeted at $85,000 per year, one week overlap of current and future director. A decrease in the longevity line is attributed to the director's retirement. Maintenance payroll increase is related to the fourth full-time maintainer being added to our staff as of January of 2022. This relates to a full year of funding for 2223. Uniforms increase is for the full-time maintainers, clothing and boot allowances. It is being properly moved to this line item. Increases in equipment maintenance, park and field materials, miscellaneous supplies and utilities is based on an inflation percentage of 6%. If asked about the percentage of budget remaining for the rest of the fiscal year, I have encumbered most of the funds with purchase orders based on historical purchases.
Okay. Do you want to cover a little bit too about the enterprise, the fees and revenue and beach funds? Because that would probably help too when you get down there.
Sure. Would you like to comment?
Just the beach enterprise, just maybe explain that a little bit. That's the revenue generated by, you know.
Okay, so we speak of that. You want me to continue down through the upcoming items?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it is addressed.
You don't ask any questions, he's gone through the whole thing.
Okay, very good. Upcoming challenges, seasonal maintainers for part-time is a challenge to fill so far this year. Facility restroom over-usage at Hole-in-the-Wall and Parrot's Park. Parrot's Park is requested in our CIP program. We need to look at future options to take pressure off the Hole-in-the-Wall facility. Increase in the minimum wage effective June 1st, 2023 of $15 per hour currently is at 13. And garbage removal at all park locations. Fees and revenue, Parks and Recreation Commission has set modest increases in the McCook fees for 2022, $2 per hour. Wage increase over the next 18 months is the main driver of the increase. The Beach Enterprise Fund revenues for 2021 totaled $242,057 compared to $152,768 in 2020. Difference is related to no non-resident fees being collected in 2020 because of the COVID restrictions. Non-resident season passes last summer totaled $78,000. In 2020, Beach Enterprise Fund lost approximately $44,000. This was offset by a one-time contribution by the State of Connecticut during bridge renovations on the Nyanac River Bridge in our impact on parking during that time. 2022 Beach Enterprise Fund was in the black approximately $8,000. Capital improvement budget, $25,000 requested for master plan study of Darrow Pond. This item is also being requested in our ARPA request. $80,000 requested to replace a Mason-style dump truck for our existing 2011 Mason truck. $750,000 Parrot's Park renovations, park opened 33 years ago and is in need of upgrades in the restrooms and garage expansion for our equipment. Special revenue fund, we continue to make a $10,000 contribution to the operating budget. And all program-related expenses and revenues are managed through the special revenue fund, which is a revolving account.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add, Tom? Or Jackie, anything on your part? Okay. And I was ex officio to that for several years, Dan is now, and if there's any questions, then we can probably also hop out too. Any questions for Mr. Beebe?
Just one quick question. You said you were going to hire a new maintenance person?
He was hired.
He was already hired, yes, correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, Bill? Anything? Because I don't look like you're pondering.
I've had this common theme as I go through the budgets this year about, we seem to have, and you're panned out here, you know, where play happens. Do you talk with the senior center about activities for seniors, things that can be more geared towards maybe not the youthful, but the over-55 crowd?
I think he does talk to them. He does kind of expand those programs across all levels of, you know, facility usage and stuff like that. So, yes, I'm sure he does talk to them.
Yeah, and the sign-ups at Parks and Rec are for pretty much all the programs out there, even for the seniors and that. They go through Anna, who's the program director.
But do they have, do they have conversations with the seniors to try to figure out what kind of things they want to do and try to make sure that they focus some, some energy?
Oh, yeah, that's why pickleball has become a very popular sport there. No, there's a, that's, I think, I can attest, there's a really good communication between the seniors and Damon, Kathy and Parks and Rec and the seniors to make sure they, you know, everything is provided for. That's a very good, that's a really good point, though.
That's the only question I had. Thank you.
No other question, no questions.
Okay. And I'll just address to that one thing that talks about the one-time State of Connecticut contribution. That's when they were doing the work under the bridge. And we lost a lot of parking spaces at Cheney Park that year. So, the state compensated us for it. And it turned out, you know, unfortunately, it turned out to be a very good thing because that was the year we were heavily, heavily impacted by COVID. So, anyway, and last year was the best year ever for the outis, non-resident parking spaces. And even with that, I think they only hit capacity at the parks on a couple of occasions. So, they were very heavily used and so.
The restrooms at Cheney Park, those aren't open in the winter, are they?
No.
No, that's mobile. They do remove it at the end of the season and then bring it back at the beginning of the season.
So, the rest, the public restrooms would be at Parrot's and at Hole-in-the-Wall?
In McCooks.
In McCooks.
But not in the winter?
None of them are open in the winter?
No, no. They close them late, or whenever the weather allows.
They usually close right after the light break because, and they have to winterize them because there's no heat to those facilities.
Well, I'm wondering, in lieu of putting in extra bathrooms as one of the, as one of the requests, if it might be less expensive to winterize the existing bathrooms, if that's a possibility?
The problem with men is in the, do you mind, Tom?
No, of course.
The problem in the summer is the over-usage of them and not so much in the winter. They only have two stalls in the men's, two stall in the women's room at, I don't have a mic, by the way. Let me grab this. No, we're all sitting here.
There's no, and the fact is, it's the overuse. They needn't, they want to add toilet facilities there rather than, there's not the demand in the winter. So, that's what Dave has said. They need the more toilet facilities than anything else.
Is it possible to add on to the existing facilities as opposed to trying to find another location?
No, that's, that's what the plan is, to add on to the location, to add more facilities to the current structure.
I thought at one point there was some discussion about trying to locate a downtown location.
There was, there is.
Okay. That's all I have.
Dan?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
Oh, I know. One other thing, I was just hearing on the news, just before it came actually, that there's a big shortage of fertilizer and grass seed and sod. And I'm just wondering how close the figuring is for the mater, for the materials that are in the budget. It's $54,000. I'm just wondering how, as I said, how close that figuring is. Can we just take the money out of contingency if we had to, if we're there insured?
Well, I'm sure we would evaluate that as the time came because most of that will be used before July 1st anyway. So, I'm sure, Tom, I'm sure you can get that information from Dave.
Yes, I'll have Dave email you information on that. Take a look at it.
Anything further? Okay, Dave. I mean, not Dave, you're Tom and Jack. See, you did so good, I thought you were Dave.
See that? Let it ride in.
Yeah, wanted it right in, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we start deliberation, we'll let, you know, Tom and Jackie leave unless they want to stay with us. But I was going to have Anna go over the revenue portion of the budget as well, just to cover that a little bit. So, if there's any questions or concerns, and then we'll start going through the review.
Are we looking at the 2022 detail expenditure? Are we going in the budget book?
No, the budget book for, under revenue.
What's the?
Written work.
Oh, okay. Of course, I went to the back.
So, for the revenues, we go through all the various revenues that we have. I take input from department heads who have revenues applicable to their departments. And then I also, on my own, keep a 10-year history. So, I kind of look at what the department heads are proposing and look at what their 10-year history is and if, kind of like, review it with them and agree on what it makes sense to use as a projected revenue in the budget. Of course, any of the state revenues is based on information provided by state resources. And then the tuition for the outside students, namely Salem, I obtain that information from the Board of Education. So, of course, the current taxes, that's budgeted based on, after we go through all the other revenues, what additional is needed in taxes. So, a little bit of increase in both prior year taxes and interest in lien current year. The education cross-sharing, it's showing an increase of $218,000. Part of the reason for that is because when we were working on the 2122 budget, we, the numbers from the state were uncertain and we used a more, the more conservative number when putting the budget together. So, that's why that shows the increase there. Building permits, that one I will admit was, was a challenge because, you know, in the last two years, they've really, you know, accelerated. But you really have to look at how much longer do we estimate that to continue? So, we did make a little bit of an increase there to $455,000. The pistol fire and lodging, we have a little bit of an increase there as well. Conveyance taxes, we did put an increase there. I will point out, maybe Mr. Siri wants to mention the windfall that we received.
I'll let you do, I'll let you do it. We had a very nice windfall. I told a couple of board members, but I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, so the, apparently, the gateway apartments have changed hands. And as a result, we received a couple of conveyance tax checks. One of them was $202,000 and the other one was what, about $147?
Yeah, it was $352,000 or right in that vicinity of total conveyance.
So, what that means is for this fiscal year, with what we had already, you know, had recorded in our system and this additional windfall, I believe we're at about $675,000 in conveyance taxes for this, for this current year. And yet, we are projecting, we did make a little bit of an increase for $285,000. However, you have to remember that the gateway sale, that's a one, a one-time windfall for us. Most of the other revenues stayed the same. We did make a reduction in investment earnings by about $20,000. The tuition, the Board of Ed is proposing $2.8 million, which is about a $116,000 decrease in what we have in this year's budget. Tipping fees commercial, there's a decrease there of about $23,000. I don't know if you remember when Mr. Bregaw made his budget presentations, he talked about, you know, the transitioning that we're having, meaning a lot of the small businesses in town, instead of getting dumpsters, they're using our trashcans. So, that means that we're getting less revenues from the outside haulers. On the other hand, we did make a bit of an increase in recycling, about $17,000. Landfill deposits, we've also increased by about $25,000. Another, if you remember, Mr. Bregaw mentioned that we keep making proposals to increase the fees that, for different items at the, at the transfer station so that the individuals that are actually using the transfer station are paying for the cost of the disposal that's passed on to the town. If you notice down where it shows ambulance subsidies, firefighter slash IT, so a portion of that projected revenue has to do with what Eastline Ambulance, we bill them for a portion of the outside services for IT when we use Star Computer. Excuse me. And then you'll note that we proposed a bit of an increase to the other fine funding using fund balance as, for the last few years, we've had some substantial growth in the unassigned fund balance. And, I mean, and especially with the windfall that we received in the taxes, I believe that will be over 15% by the end of the fiscal year.
Questions for Anna on revenue projections? And here again, when Anna and I went through this, Anna stressed it. She's very conservative and, which is good. We'd much rather have her, you know, because, go back and, she looks at a longer history to where, well, the last couple of years have been really high, let's keep, well, here again, I was at Rotary today and a couple of the realtors said they can see it starting to slow a little, little. They didn't say a lot, and a lot of it has to do with limited inventory, but they did see a little slowing. So, you know, Anna was just making sure that any figure she put in here, she was very comfortable that that would be a figure we'd be able to attain. Any questions for her? Okay, Ann, Dan, you go first.
So, I noticed that the Tax Collector's Office is taking a more aggressive stance with collecting back taxes. There are scheduled foreclosure sales in April. How, as those start to get paid off, how is that reflected in this budget or in this revenue stream? Is it at all, or is it farther projected?
So, actually, the tax sale is going to take place on April 21st. So, everything that we receive from that will be received in the current fiscal year. So, what'll, what'll happen is, it'll be similar to the situation that I just discussed with the conveyance taxes. We're going to see our receipts exceed what our original projections this fiscal year are.
So, the actual will go up in the actual receipts?
In this fiscal year, that's correct.
The actual will go up for this fiscal, yeah.
For this fiscal year, right, okay. So, it won't, it won't affect the projected?
Correct.
Probably, right. Unless there's some next year too. But right now, what's happening in, in April won't affect our projection in this.
Correct.
Right. Ann?
Yeah, Anna, in the past two years, when we produce the revenue, she, I believe you, with Board of Finance work as well, we used a different collection rate for taxes. Like, we had a lesser collection rate because of the pandemic, in year one of pandemic and year two of the pandemic, and remembers that as well. So, I'm wondering, are we heading in that same direction or will we go back to the, to the normal collection rate, which was what, 98.?
In the past, we used 98.4 and I believe we used 98.2 in the last two fiscal years.
Okay. So, what is your feeling about that at this point?
Actually, I'd like to wait until after we receive the, the completed grand list, which I'm expecting by the end of this month, and take a look at that and how the, how the burden has shifted and possibly make a decision.
So, so you mean from the State of Connecticut, the finalization of some of the grant information? Is that what you said?
No, 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 the grand list.
Oh, the grand. I thought you said grant. Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Grand list, okay. And when, so, when do you expect that?
By the end of this month.
By the end of the month?
Yes.
Okay, that was another question I had also. Okay. And then, back to grants. So, I, I'm wondering about LoSiP. Did I not see it here?
So, as.
And Adult Ed and a couple of others.
Right. So, if you remember, the LoSiP grant, we no longer run that through the general fund. We run the LoSiP grants in the capital and non-reoccurring fund. Because what often happened is, by the time we get to doing the projects, they're overlapping fiscal years. So, it just seemed more efficient to put it all in the CNRE fund. And they, we do the appropriations in June when we do all the annual appropriations for the projects that we plan, we plan to do during fiscal year.
Okay. And if I recall, the State of Connecticut won't sort of verify its numbers till, you know, for a while yet in terms of the grants that we get from them. But this is a pretty good, I guess, estimate, yeah, because they.
They're the latest numbers that we have from the state, correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now, because you answered my question about Assessor and when we'll, we'd get that information.
We, so remember, the grand list that we get at the end of this month will be subject to Board of Assessment Appeals hearings and any adjustments that they make to it.
Right. And what is that timeframe? Does that take us through March?
The end of March.
Okay, for the appeals to be decided. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Bill?
You've got a line item for Cincy Park, but you don't have one for McCooks because McCooks goes to Park and Rec Fund, is that right? Rentals for?
Does my call with special revenue? My special revenue?
Oh, Cheney Park, the rentals have to do with the.
Fishing, fishing docks.
Okay. So, the McCook rentals go to Park and Rec and their special revenue fund?
Correct, yes.
The contingency fund, is that the one that goes over from year to year? It's not contingency, it's the other fund?
Undesignated fund?
Undesignated, is that what it's called?
Correct.
Wouldn't this 200 and almost $352,000 from this year unexpected impact that? So, wouldn't that flow into next year? So, next year's contingency fund can be smaller?
Okay, so, so contingency is on the expenditure side. What you're thinking of is the unassigned fund balance. So, what happens, what'll happen at the end of this fiscal year is, you know, we have our operating results. So, that's the amount by which revenues exceed expenditures. And then at the end of the year, that, that difference goes into fund balance.
So, wouldn't you expect a windfall from this year to flow into next year?
That would be where a decision would be made on how much to apply to the, the fund balance account.
So, in this budget book summary, does it have an allocation for next year to go into the fund balance?
Yes, that's what this account, all the way at the end on the second page, it says other financing fund balance and it shows $500,000.
And I think your question is, Bill, with what we just heard today, couldn't we increase it by that much, which could be done?
That's, I just, I see this money coming in and then it just like disappears. I don't see it being accounted for moving forward.
Well, no, it won't disappear.
I understand. I'm just saying, for paperwork-wise, for auditing purposes or whatever the reviews that we're doing now, where does that money ultimately end up at, right? So, ultimately, I hope that it goes to the bottom line and that the taxes.
So, so, in, so, in theory, for communities our size, they recommend that we have an unassigned fund balance of about 15% of our annual operating budget. So, for years, we struggled with that. And we've, we've seen a change with that over the last few years because we've had, you know, we've taken a conservative approach to budgeting our projected revenues and that, that, you know, that fund balance has, has grown. So, then you get to a point where, okay, we've achieved that goal. So, perhaps we look at increasing what we applied to subsequent years' budgets at, at the amount by which we, we exceed that 15%. But then you could also say, we could also look at perhaps saying, okay, whatever dollar amount we have that exceeds the 15%, perhaps we apply that to capital purchases. So, that's something, I think, now that we have achieved, you know, we're looking like we're going to achieve that 15% mark, that we sit down and further define our policy on unassigned fund balance and how we might use the excess over that 15% mark.
So, how, so, we would have this discussion after, after the budget is actually voted on?
Actually, isn't, usually the Board of Finance is the one that makes that decision.
We won't have that discussion.
The Board of Finance will because they're the ones who get the final figures as we move forward from that too. Like, for the tax, the tax sale, we've raised a significant amount of money already with a few people paying on that too. And depending on how many people pay before and how many people, you know, you know, you know, take advantage of that and come and purchase through the tax sale, you know, that would be all revenue that would even be figured at a later date. So, that's something that the Board of Finance could always take into consideration.
Yeah, I mean, because as we move closer to the period of time where the Board of Finance will, you know, be making final decisions and perhaps even before we, the Board of Finance does their public hearing, we're going to have a better idea of what's going to happen for that tax sale. Because say you start with 50 properties, at the end, maybe you end up with 15 to 18 that actually go to the tax sale because all the others are going to find a way to pay what they owe.
And what we could do is make sure, Roseanne, as we go on, as we become older, make sure we pass, we as a board, you recommend to the Board of Finance, definitely, too, so.
Well, I'm also thinking that certainly the price of fuel oil and those expenses, I don't know how much of a buffer we've got.
We're, we're good. Joe has locked in. So, he locked, Joe's figures are based on what he locked in for. So, we, he, like I said, he picked a mini Black Friday where the price dropped 17 cents a gallon and he locked in. And, you know, they thought, well, maybe it'll keep going down. But as we see now, he probably made a good choice.
Yeah, there are issues. Like, I remember he came to speak to the ARP sub.
Yeah, there are issues, like I remember he came to speak to the A R P Subcommittee, and he was saying, like, the garbage truck, originally it was $300,000, now it's gone up to $340,000. So I think there are issues with supply and demand, and the numbers are, you know, are going up.
Well, just as Anna and I were dealing today, we authorized last year, between, you know, through town meeting and through the budget cycle, $680,000 for a new fire truck. You couldn't even get them ordered. Chief Barone was able to finally do it, and he was really lamenting, because he was coming in at about $40,000 more, because the price has gone up 7.5%. And he went through, that was the best he could do with five manufacturers. He was able to get it down to six, but it was through a tremendous amount of effort on his part just to keep it down, because, you know, the supply and the costs are just skyrocketing for everybody.
So it seems like when they order it, they can't lock in at that price, that if everything's going up, it's just going up?
Well, here again, when you do get to order it, yes, and by the time you're able to get the specifications, then they say, well, what you ordered, we can't get, and then, so, yeah.
So I think that has to be taken into account, too, that, you know, fuel, but everything is going up due to, you know, supply chain issues.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, to Roseanne's point, and what Anna had previously said, I do think it's probably a good idea for us to have a sense of policy about what to do when we do reach that, you know, 15% of our budget as an unassigned fund balance amount. And then if we have the extra surplus, you know, what's a good way to recommend directing that? So, and I know, we do have an unassigned, we have a fund balance policy, but it is from like 2008, and I think it recommended 8% or something like that, so it...
Well, it recommended 8% as the minimum.
Right, yes, yeah. So, but just that, that's the point about what do you do when you're in a good place, and then do you keep adding to your unassigned fund balance, or do you, you know, deal with some other things that are happening, like inflationary costs, or whatever? So, but, yeah, I think that you could make some thought about it.
Yeah, no, and I think once we have a really good idea on where we stand, rather than come up with a policy now, I think revisit that once we have a much better...
Yes, I agree.
I mean, we can encourage people on a weekly basis to purchase Gateway, but, you know, that's not going to happen, I mean, we're not getting that windfall. But, I think that'd be a good, if everyone's good with that, we'll keep revisiting this as we go through the cycle, because once we adopt it, we're pretty much, I mean, there's always adjustments that can be made, and, you know, so.
That 15% is 15% of the total budget, or 15% of what?
The total budget.
Okay, any more questions on the revenues?
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you, Anna.
And I've talked to a couple about going through, and just, I think, basically going, rather than flipping back and forth, it's just better to start and keep going, and we'll see how far we get tonight, and, you know, we won't make it too late, for a lot of reasons. So, the first one, First Selectman's Budget 101, it shows a little bit of a decrease by about $800, $750. Any comments on the First Selectman's Budget?
Yes, I'd like to speak to that.
Roseanne?
And let me begin my remarks by saying that Mr. Siri has not been a part of any of this discussion regarding the First Selectman. And so I would like to make a proposal here, and also give a little bit of history. So, beginning, by the way, thank you to Ms. Johnson for helping me assess some of these figures. Beginning, I would say, probably right around the end of Mr., or towards the beginning of Mr. Farmica's term, we began to realize that the salary for the First Selectman was really not what it should be, even in comparison with some other towns. And so, the Board worked very hard to gradually bring that salary up to what would be a more reasonable level. So if you go way down to the bottom of the list, we had, we were anticipating that the salary at this point would be somewhere in the area of $130,000. After Mr. Farmica left office, we had a new First Selectman, and he opted to take a lesser salary. The Board never voted to reduce the salary, except, of course, with approving to forward the total budget, but we never discussed the fact that the First Selectman decided essentially on his own that he was willing to take less money. I think at this point, that this is a perfect time to begin to discuss what would be an appropriate salary. I'm sure that C C M could provide us with some figures, but I really think that in light of people thinking about forming a charter revision commission, there's been some talk about possibly having a town manager, I can assure you that we're not going to get anybody for $100,000, regardless of whether we continue to have a First Selectman or some other form. One remedy that I had thought was that each year, over the next few years, we could increase by a sub amount, maybe starting at 5,000 and working up. And as I said, I think that this is a good time. We have no First Selectman announcing candidacy for the next round. Mr. Siri may choose to run, or he may not, but he certainly would have an opponent, one way or the other, and so I think that this is an opportune time for us to right what I consider to be a wrong. And perhaps in part, that's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen that we, but how can you, there's no way to insist that someone take a salary and not decide to, or, you know, decide that that salary, they don't need that money. I think the salary should go with the position, not the person. So I would like to, in this, in this first, in this round, as I said, it doesn't, we don't have a particular candidate, so upcoming, there's, but I do feel that this year, we should begin to increase the salary appropriately. So those are my comments, and that's the past history.
Yeah, so, when I was the Chairman of the Finance, the Board of Selectmen presented their proposal to the Board of Finance, and after this Board made their recommendations, the Board of Finance tasked the First Selectman with some budget cuts, and that's why he cut the budget where he did after this Board did its review. So it was in, I think it was in process. I think it was just unfortunate that, you know, it didn't circulate back the way it didn't circulate back. I was, before you started this conversation, I was looking through the book, and I kind of came to the same conclusion, that I thought that the budget for somebody that's managing $85 million budget, and $100,000 is kind of low, especially since some of the other department heads are doing better than that. I would think, at the minimum, the First Selectman should be making a couple percentages above all the other department heads, just the way it's structured, should be structured. So I went and I did some Google searches to try to find comparable pay, and it's all over the place. I mean, there's, you can't, I can't find a consistent approach, and it seems like every town's got their different, you know, well, you know, our First Selectman's kind of just doing this, you know, part-time, because we got, whatever else. So, I called C C M, I got handed around a couple of times, and got on voicemail, so I didn't really get to an answer, but I thought that C C M would be a good place to look to figure out what it is. But I think we ourselves have our department heads' budgets that we can look at, and at a minimum, we can look at some of those, the ones we talked about tonight, for example, and say, you know, we should be, we should be some percentage, I think, above that.
Well, I also think another point is that the First Selectman's Office also had additional help. There was an assistant secretary, there was an executive secretary, and then there was a second secretary, and there was also a receptionist at the main desk. Those positions were eliminated, and let's face it, the work has to be done. And so now we have, you know, one secretary.
Yeah, I can't speak to whether or not that worked in other places, right, because we have a bigger human resources department now, we have a lot more other administrative functions and things, so. I can't, I can't say necessarily, just because there was one less administrative office, a person in one office, doesn't mean that that worked in other places. But, I concur that I think it should be addressed, it should be increased, I'm just not smart enough to know how much it should be increased by, but I would be in favor of an increase.
Well, I was going to suggest 5,000.
I think it's reasonable, if you're going to be increasing it, that every year, then you increase, you know, a certain amount, you know? That makes sense, versus one big chunk, I think, that's just more difficult, I think.
Well, I'll put that on the table, and if Bill uncovers, gets any additional information from C C M, but, you know, this is a problem that we have in this town, is that our setup is quite unique. You know, we combine departments, where in other towns, there's, you know, there are separate departments, we combine job descriptions, where, you know, if we look at our neighbor, Waterford, who of course has more money than we do, but perhaps not for long, so it's a hard comparison.
And their town manager, I understand, oh, right, Groton Town Town Manager, Waterford, I think, is only paying their First Selectman $110,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're not doing real well, but the town manager in Groton is making $175,000.
Well, a town manager, you are going to pay, your town manager, by virtue of his position, is going to be commensurate with sort of the superintendent, you're getting up into that much, you know, higher pay levels.
Yeah.
Because you've usually got someone experienced, some advanced degrees in, you know, management and so forth.
So, Roseanne, as we're still talking about your proposal, I would think that right now, if you were doing really, really well as a department head, you might expect to see close to 5% a year. And if we're trying to get equity adjustment, I would think it'd be closer than seven, eight, somewhere up in that way. I don't think 5% is going to get us up to 130.
Mm-hmm.
Right, I mean, 130 was your target 10 years ago?
Mm-hmm.
So, at 3% growth a year, it's, 130 is probably 145 today, if that is the right number, I don't know if it is, but...
Well, I think that we could, we could set it up so that we would make a commitment to over the next three years?
Yeah, we could probably make a recommendation, I don't think we can make a commitment.
Right, but that would be our, our goal.
Right, right.
That, over the next three years, or whatever we decided to set. So I'd like to put it on the table for tonight, and have people think about it. As I said, Bill might get some more information from C C M, and thank you very much for doing that. And I think, for a small town, we do pretty well, but I think in this case, we can do better.
But if we don't motion it tonight, or if we don't make a recommendation tonight, then when are we going to make a recommendation? 23rd?
Well, I don't know that we're going to finish all the budgets tonight.
No, we can come back to...
We got the Board of Ed next, and then is that the last one?
No, we're going to, we'll adapt the budget next, a week from tonight. So we can come back to this one, you know, if you'd like, too.
And anyone else on the Board can, if, you know, you have some other resources, if you've got some contacts with other towns, for comparison?
Yeah, what I wanted to do is, I wanted to look at, we just did this study for the Chief of Police. I'd like to do apples to apples, and see for those same towns, what do those same towns have for First Selectman, or Mayor, or the managers, I think we have to get away from the town managers, but we should, you need at least know if they have a town manager, like I said, Groton has a town manager, so they're not going to work on the list, but that's what I did, is I started with the Chiefs list, and I just started looking up those towns the best I could. Not very good for the short amount of time I spent on it, but I should have started sooner. Okay.
Dan?
No, I, you know, I just looking at, I was really surprised to see, when you lay it out from 2011 to 2021, First Selectman is being paid less in 2021 than the same position it was in 2011, 10 years later, and it's roughly $1,000 less, so, given inflationary pressure, and gross wage increases in other sectors, I think, I think it does need to be adjusted, and it shouldn't be a unilateral decision by the First Selectman. I think we have, as a Board, decide what it should be, and move forward with that model in the future. Be a Board decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, just, I agree with Dan's point, yeah, definitely need some adjustment, and Roseanne, and Bill as well, I agree with them, just need to digest the numbers a little bit, and maybe we can come up with a little plan for next week.
Okay. I'll weigh in a little bit on this as well.
Well, we tried to keep you out of it.
Yeah, and Anna, good job, Anna.
She was sworn to secrecy.
Yeah, and here again, it's, and I think a good point has been made, Roseanne, it's not the person, it's the position. One thing I think we've done is we've ensured that, you know, the person running for this office has to almost have a guaranteed other source of income, because first of all, you don't know how long you'll be doing it, and in a lot of cases, with the background you need to do it, you're probably taking a pay cut. Fortunately, you know, I do have a pension from another source, so, you know, it's not really a problem. But it might deter others from, you know, very capable people. But I'm also cognizant of the fact that there are some real other needs here, too, so I'm really torn, because, you know, Bill, you mentioned, you know, people may have been moved around, we really don't have, you know, the one person that's gone in the Selectman's Office, the receptionist, there was also a person in the office, in the town clerk, there was a half person, they're gone, and all we've done really with Tracy is elevated that position to a, you know, basically, an actual H R position, so I do know there's some needs. If it's the decision of the Board, I won't make that unilateral decision, I'll abide by what the decision of the Board is on that, but when it comes to the discussion for that, too, I would recuse myself from any further discussion, I'd let Ann take over that part of the meeting, nor would I cast a vote, so, but anyway, that's my input, so, we'll come back and visit this next week. Anything else other than the First Selectman's salary on the Selectman's Budget? Okay, Assessor's Office. Any changes, any comments there? We're not going to be able to move this faster, everything, I assure you. Anna, do we know if Chris was able to locate a desk from the Public Safety Building?
I have not heard.
Okay, one of the things that Chris needs is a new desk, and we had, we had, and she, we were looking to find an alternate source for her, so, okay.
I've got some milk crates in the basement.
No, no. So, W B Mason has some things, too, so I'm sure she's looking at that, too, so, and I will give a lot of credit to Chris, I mean, it was basically moving into a totally new position, and so forth like that, and she's been investing a lot of time into the office, and Sarah has done a great job, you know, it's turned into a very, very good situation in there.
I think our reporting secretary should have a new desk. That desk is, was Al Olaf Shindali's desk when she was principal at my aunt's school.
Okay, well, no, then it's an antique desk, it fits in with the town history, so...
Yeah, I think that's right. You need an antique chair to go with.
Well, the chair will do, but, so...
Does anyone know why the tax bill printing is up so much? I mean, is there, why is that? I just, it just sort of stuck out at me.
Just a little bit, but I think...
I can comment on that.
But, go ahead, Anna.
Okay, so, in the past, we've just outsourced the July bills, so this includes outsourcing the bills in January as well. Okay, so, in the past, we've just outsourced the July bills, so this includes outsourcing the bills in January as well.
Thank you.
But another thing, no, just one of the general themes running through all this is the printing, right? We have tons and tons of paper, and people look at it for a second and throw it in the garbage, right? I don't know what it costs per sheet, for each one of these sheets that we keep handing out, especially the color ones, that we come out with these colored pictures, and it's like, yeah, it's, it's... I think we can save a lot of money if we try to put some effort into printing less, and staying more electronic at weekends.
We're trying to, as you're saying there, we've also, we've just gotten a quote in today, within the last few days, for digitizing the land records down there. I mean, just to make people be able to access things online, and not have to keep printing and printing. Especially for us, too. I, uh, agreed. But I, aren't we required to mail a tax bill though? There might be some statutory requirement.
Well, actually, as I understand, if believe it or not, we're not required to mail out bills. That's done as a courtesy. Residents are supposed to know that as residents of the state, you pay taxes, but we all know, if we don't send bills, we're gonna have a little bit of difficulty.
You might have a slow, you might have a slow participation rate, but you might give people the option to opt out.
I was just gonna say, is that something, and it'd be, we'll like to do it for this year, you know? But definitely, moving forward, can you opt, you know, same thing a lot of us have done with our, our bills, our bills, go paperless. And you can even set it up to where your taxes, boom, you know, you have to, more user friendly. I think that's a good point.
Pay them, to pay them off, and done.
Yep. Any other comments then on the, uh, okay? Going to Building 104, the building official, as the write-up indicates, he wanted a full-time assistant. Uh, I didn't feel that was, you know, something that, that we could really handle right now, uh, you know? Because not only would it be the, I think he had that person at, at, I believe, sixty-five thousand dollars, and then plus the benefit package with that, so that, you're talking, you know, probably closer to eighty-five thousand dollars for that. So we did give a sizable increase to, uh, uh, the part-time budget as well. And we did, you know, did give him a bit of an increase in admin clerical too, to help with the processing of the permits. And here again, that's another great thing, if people can do all this online, rather than having to come in.
But he's got a net negative budget, right? So, will that increased staff increase the number of people that are gonna submit permits and things like that?
I don't think it'll increase the number, it just may expedite the processing of them.
It's just when I see the few budgets that have revenue in it, it's like, how can we increase that revenue?
So, I agreed with what you, with the first selectman wanted to do, but is that already in here then? Is that automatically those changes?
Oh, tho-, yeah, those are here right now. This is reflective of what I've already done, I just wanna let you know, because he had mentioned that he had asked for more, so I want, yeah, everything is reflected in here.
Okay, perfect, right.
So.
I have one question about training, um, I think, okay, so, let's see, just wanna make sure. Okay, so are we at five hundred, is that the, is that the number for that, five, it, not zero, correct?
Right.
Okay, and that should cover, because he was talking about, when Mr. White was here, talking about his requirements.
Right.
Okay, gotcha, okay. So, had, had he asked for a thousand, is that?
Yes, that's.
He had asked for a thousand, and we cut it back down to the previous year.
Gotcha, okay.
So.
Presumably that covers what he needs for, for his required training.
And he, and he asked, if you'll notice on the, the last page, on page two of two, the narrative, uh, and the narrative write-up, uh, he indicates cap begin digitizing records of a hundred thousand. The quote we got back from our company was roughly about seventy thousand dollars, and Jen, um, said there was a couple things in there that she felt needed to be added on, which would probably be the price up closer to that too. But she's, you know, they're the experts in that, and she was unfortunately out today, so we're gonna get back with the gentleman tomorrow, so.
They're talking about also on that miscellaneous supplies, including new code books. Is that something that they could get online versus like paper copies of these code books? It's under miscellaneous supply.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I can find that out, and if it is, we can come back and take a look at that, if that's something you can get on, online, or could be possibly that is the online.
I'm saying, like, going forward.
All right, let me get that, we can come back.
But then they'd have to have iPads or something when they're out at the job site, because they're gonna need the code books to check it in.
It's kinda like, maybe Fire Marshal has the same scenario.
I mean, I think if they did, even if they did get, like, some type of online, it would be in the form of a subscription, so there would be some cost associated with, with that, with that.
Wouldn't it be less though, then?
That's possible.
Okay, let me, let me ask that question.
I don't know, I think when people come in, and you're told that they have a code violation, or there's some clarification needed, I, I think most people would still want to see a paper copy, or be able to look at a book, and see it in a book.
Actually, I, I haven't been down there a couple times, and when some people come in, especially contractors, that are doing this on a regular basis, they're, they're the ones that'll say, okay, what's that? Because they already, they already have a lot of these, it's the people who are gonna do their own deck or something like that, that will ask for that, so. It's, it's a little bit of both, Roseanne, so.
And again, if it's a PDF on your iPad or whatever, you can print out that page.
Yeah.
It's not for anybody coming making a, a print.
Well, you're assuming that everybody has that. There are a lot of people in our town that don't.
Right, but if somebody came in and needed a page, whoever was in the office, or the visiting inspector, whoever, would you say, let me print you out page three, three through seven, or whatever pages are your main, potato, or one of the jets you use?
Yeah, or if that, yeah, confirm.
But I was thinking, if you're out in the field, I mean, you wanna, you know, you wanna have an electrical code book if you're inspecting.
Yeah.
You're gonna be maybe in some place, you know, you're crawling around in an attic or something. It may, maybe easier to have a code book with you, depending on, sort of, but, probably a little of both.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll go back and talk to him about that, that line, see, uh, because his expenses have been about fifteen hundred and so forth, so we'll take a look at that. Moving on to town engineer, that decreases, so... And I think Joe points out, you know, there, some of that is being transferred, has been transferred to water and sewer, because of the work they put in on there. Any questions on that?
Well, I think you might be questioned on the big jump in stormwater management.
Yeah, that was transferred from the other budget to this budget.
Right. So, yeah, that's just moving it from one to another. And here again, in the, uh, build back, uh, or the infrastructure build, there is some stormwater management sources in there, but I don't know if that, those would apply, but that's something we could look at a grant for too, or possibly apply for, so. Anything further on town engineer? Moving on to HR 106, we have the HR coordinator's salary position, and that's just bringing up to what, you know, if you gave a year of what her current salary is now. Um, the part-time clerical, is there any discussion on that? You know, I've given my opinion on that, I'd love some other input.
Well, I think we had previous discussion on it.
Okay. The employee background checks, as we can see, that, that's new as well, the three thousand dollars, and is, I think she did a very good job explaining the different levels of what she does there. And the supplies, I think she answered that question well too, to where she, she stopped bothering other... And Bill, unfortunately, for, for the, for your personnel files, that's the thing, that you still have to have the hard copies of everything, and so, she does have to make copies of stuff right now.
Right, and everything was electronic.
Okay.
And on, on the background check, she did say that the fee was based on the number in depth of the background check.
The background check, yeah, the more you find, the more you find out, the more...
And you gotta look, yeah, so, I thought that was a good response.
Yeah, she said it. But I think that's probably a good thing to look at, if we're gonna digitize in the town clerk's office, to look at possibly doing that too, because Tracy's already said she needs, she needs more file cabinets.
Yeah, and electronic versions are easier, I think, to copy protect, so that the wrong people don't get into them and things like that. Where if you got somebody's stuff in a file, it's easier for the wrong person to get a hold of it.
Well, and I think too, as she has found out, she found some stuff in a box, that, how did it get in this box? That should've been in a file, if, if you sit down electronically, put it into a personnel file or a medical file, it's there. It can't, and if the, if a piece of paper winds up in the box, that's fine, because that document is...
And you can control access to it, which was the nice thing, was it's electronic.
I, I think that's one of the things, I, I've been...
We will be transitioning as, as we...
As we, yeah.
Over to having it be more electronic.
I think that's one of the things we've been finding out over the, I have found out over the last couple of months, there's so many things we need to do to improve this type of stuff, the digitizing, which, you know, once you get it done, it allows more time to do other things, and then I think it allows, especially in the town clerk and land use, it's gonna allow a much better product for our, you know, the town residents and people trying to utilize some services this time.
And when you go to search for something, you typed in a couple of key words, and you get there, you don't look through whatever that is.
And this way, you know, uh, for instance, today, here again, personnel-wise, Jen had to take a, a day off, and Karen's over at Public Works on Wednesday, so there's no administrative assistant down there. So, so someone comes in, you know, they have to ring the bell, so that one of the guys in the offices could come out. And that, here again, if you're at home, you could do all that stuff sitting there, whatever you'd need, so. That's, you know, here a good reason for doing it. Any further, moving over to town clerk, Karen actually has a, a decrease in her budget. And she, you know, the part-time clerical in there is, uh, one thing too, as you saw in 2021, there was a much bigger expense in the part-time clerical, that was the no question asked absentee ballots, where the, the forms were mailed by the state out to people, so her office was extremely busy in, uh, at, you know, October, leading up to the election in twenty, twenty...
I just, I had a question for Anna, on the town clerk revenues on page two of the narrative. In the town clerk fees, that hundred and thirty-eight thousand, does that include, like, dog license, dog license revenue as well? It's always something that sort of floats out there.
No, it does not include, um, the dog licenses.
Do you wanna know how much we get per dog license?
I know.
It's very little.
I know, because I say it.
Well, actually, what we collect goes to the state, we're collecting that.
Oh, that's right, and you get, like, a teeny amount from that state.
We get a very small amount of, of, of that too, no, that's...
Okay, so, so I, I got you there, yeah, I just couldn't, I couldn't remember, remember that about the license dollars, okay. So the state really takes all our dog license revenue.
Pretty much.
They have their teeth into that one.
Yeah. Nice, yeah, nice.
All right, good one, thank you, all right.
Any other comments on town clerk's budget? Health, this is Ledge Light, and here again, that's submitted to us by them. You know, we have a contract with them, and, uh, you know, we've, if anything, over the last couple of years, we'd be, you know, if we had to try to do this ourselves at Ledge Light House District, it would've been extremely difficult. Steve Mansfield and, uh, the staff there, if you have a question, um, they get back to you very quickly with recommendations and whatnot. Steve is always, or one of his assistants is always at our department head meetings to give a rundown. And, uh, they have some of the best nurses in the world, wouldn't you agree?
They have some good people there.
Yeah. Okay, nothing there, moving on to 109, IT. This obviously is another big change for us too, so, I opened it up, you know, this is the establishment of an IT director position, so if anybody would like to start the discussion, Ann?
Yeah, I'll start, um, I, I'm just really pleased to see this, that we're, you know, going in this direction of having, of creating the new position, and having a director, and the database supervisor position under that person. I mean, the office, to me, has been needing to be reconfigured, and it will be, it will just centralize so many IT issues that the town has, because we have different, you know, keeping track of the bazillion vendors, and et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah, this one, I'm, I'm very much on board for.
Okay.
Also, on that, um, you know, when we go to this hybrid, uh, system for our meetings, when that happens, I think it's very difficult for a board member to sit here.
We've already reached out to try and, we're gonna work with the schools and that, to try and get someone here on a student to help out, because, you know, for instance, now, if Ann was, if this was a hybrid meeting, for Ann to be running, participating in the discussion, or any board member to try and be running the monitors, and who's in the waiting room, and, and so forth like that.
It's very distracting.
Yeah, because, because if this was hybrid, for instance, tonight, Mike McDowell would've been able to participate maybe from home. So whoever's monitoring this is trying to listen, but, you know, letting him in and out.
Right.
And, uh, so, no, I think that's a, that's a good point.
We had, in past years, we have had some students who have done it, but, um, I tried the last couple of years to see if we could get anybody, and we haven't been able to. I wonder if we might consider minimum wage?
I would think we'd, I think a stipend is something that we probably would have to do, because you're asking somebody to do more than just change camera angles, you're asking people to actually monitor, you know, the waiting rooms and so forth like that, and making sure that you aren't, you know, infiltrated, as we've seen a couple, happen a couple of times.
Responsibility.
Yeah.
So, if it was hybrid, would that be the public then, could, what we, and is that what you're saying?
Not, not really weigh in as far as, I mean, they, they could, they could, they could enter, and here again, if you enter people without vetting them, because when we did the town meeting last year, that was a hybrid, and not only you had Grant Place, who was taking care of all the cameras, then you had someone who was responsible for, you know, vetting the people, making sure if they came in, they were legitimate. And then you had, the, also, the person up by the podium, who was basically, you know, monitoring who was, after they had been let in there. So it was, that was a little more involved, because, uh, but it's, it's a process to, to do that. It's not as simple as just letting, you know, punching people in. And if the Board of Ed does it now, they have the hybrid, and Grant Place and one of his assistants, there's always two people back there working the cameras, and so the board members, no one on the board, is trying to work that angle with the cameras and so forth.
I think a stipend's a good idea. I think students have busy schedules, some of them have part-time jobs, and, um...
Well, I've reached, I, I've reached out to, uh, uh, same for, uh, Free Rivers, to see if they might have some, some, you know, someone whose IT, that would be looking at an internship or something like that too. They have not gotten back to me, I could reach out to them again, but that's one of the things we'd look at too. Yeah, because here's someone with a little bit more background, so. So we could use, and I would think we could always, that's something, if I get a quote, we can always, like I said, we set aside an ARP contingency, that's probably something we can take out of that for at least the startup.
Well, are other boards and commissions going to be on, on board with this also?
Well, actually, the only two boards that tape their meetings are the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen.
Zoning occasionally will do it as well.
In the Wetlands.
In the Wetlands have to, and certain times would have to do it too. And here again, that's, that's where we could work out that type of a schedule, if we knew in advance what, what the person, you know, what meetings...
But that's just the recording part of it, you still have to manage the waiting room, and who's coming in and who's coming out. With the building commission meeting the other day, I mean, he was, you were there, the prank caller stopped in.
Yeah.
Come and visit us for a minute.
Well, you missed the really good meeting.
No. Was that with the dancing people and so forth? Yeah, okay.
But, you know, it's, the problem is, it, it, you know, Ann doing that, it really takes away from your, you mean, you wanna focus on, you know, the task at hand, and to have that responsibility on top of it, I, I think that's a lot for anyone.
Well, you know, I think...
And so if we could, I mean, if we can find a way to, to get some help on that, I think that's important. We should have backup on the board here too, that knows how to use it.
I think that IT director would be the first step, because then you've got someone with a background and knowledge of what is needed to do that. Because here we're all, you know, Bill, I think you're far more tech savvy than the rest of us, but these are people who... the rest of us, but these are people who really know it. And one thing I noticed, you know, for Carmen over the last couple of weeks, not only is she being asked to do things that you would ask a director, she's trying to do the everyday IT stuff to get the, she's trying to help Ann out today to get some things on the computers. You know, if something goes down, she's the one we have to call, so I think that director position is the one that can say, okay, this is what you need, and they're the one that may have the contacts at Three Rivers and all this other stuff to, you know, so we're not trying to, you know, fix it up, so.
Yeah, I mean, there are ways to manage it. Well, we had the last year as a Pratt, everything was Zoom meetings, and we just used the waiting room, and nobody could come in if they weren't in the waiting room, and whoever's running the meeting had to, you know, check the waiting room once in a while, but that's how you filtered out the people that shouldn't have been there.
Yeah.
And then I didn't tend to keep everybody muted the way that we typically keep everybody muted, so that makes it easier, that, you know, people can unmute themselves as well.
But, anyway, there are, there are things that you can do to make it easier. So my question on this budget was, I don't see any offsets, right? We hired this full-time guy to replace people that were doing part-time stuff, my understanding, and I don't see any budgets going down to replace the part timers or the...
Okay, if you go...
If I, if I might just point out on that...
Okay, you want to talk about STAR?
So with regards to STAR, when we did the budget, so you heard me when we did the revenues, there was in the, from Eastline Ambulance, a portion of that was what they contribute for the IT support. So if you look on the bottom, that $41,921, that's what they're going to contribute in the '22, '23 fiscal year. In this year's budget, when we set the budget for the, that support line item, we did not include the portion that was attributable to what ambulance and the fire departments were going to use. When we did the '22, '23 budget, we included it in that $160,000, but we also have the revenue coming in to offset it. We didn't, it wasn't done properly in this year's budget. So if it had been done properly in last year's budget, the number would have been, you know, like, in this year's budget, the number would have been closer to $200,000.
Anna, is that described in, like, account 221 in the narrative? Is that where you are?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, on the very last page of IT, where it shows proposed STAR contract this year was total for, then was $138,242, this year is going to be, proposed is $71,617, so a $66,625 reduction, which for STAR computer. You know, it's an increase for the on-call payment, but that would just be the normal, you know, increase, three percent.
So there's a $60,000 decrease here sometimes?
On the very last page with our online, we're for contract, for contract services, it shows, right now, we pay, this year, we paid STAR $130, we had budgeted $138,242. This, next year, we're budget, we're planning on budgeting $71,617.
So it's the very last page of this budget, this budget number, and it's proposed STAR contract? Very, very last page, before you get to the registrar's budget.
Was it the $138,242?
Yes.
Yeah, right next to you, yeah. Because we're still, Anna, we're still going to have to utilize STAR, I mean, because they've been, they've been really helpful with, especially Dispatch coming online, so to get rid of, you know, to totally get rid of them would be not advisable.
Yeah, and I asked that question when we were reviewing it specifically.
I think, too, we've had Joe Braga kind of pinch-hitting and covering and doing some of these things, but that's just not a long-term solution.
I think the problem with, well, the problem is with pinch-hitting in so many areas, eventually something suffers. And you haven't seen it yet, but as time goes on, I think you do, you know, and both he and the chief, Chief Inglestein have done a lot with IT that, you know, so...
But, you know, you're reaching a point of sophistication now with these systems, that you've got to have an expert, and you have to have someone, that's their sole focus, and you can't have someone running a police department or running, you know, Public Works, trying to, trying to, oh, jeez, we got a problem out here with a computer, and you've got to take away from what you're doing and put, you know, put that into your brain while you're trying to figure out what's true to the problem. And you can eat up a whole day trying to, trying to, trying to solve a problem on a computer system and take away from everything else. So it's time, and we need that position, and so, I fully support it.
So that offset would have showed up in the police budget for the STAR system, for the STAR contract?
No.
Look at the expense.
It's a revenue.
Revenue.
So if you go back to the revenues, and you look at ambulance subsidy...
So that's what you're saying, is that the revenue of 41 would have been greater last year, if you documented what it was last year? Could have been less last year.
So, so essentially, by showing, by itemizing the proposed revenue on the revenue side, we also itemized the expenditure. We did not do that in this year's budget. We didn't include the revenue, and we did not, we show the expense amount related to the services, you know, for the Eastline ambulance in the, in the expense account.
Okay.
So they were both understated in the budget this year, both the expense and the revenue.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on IT? Moving on to registrars, the only postage, I think Wendy explained that fairly well, office supplies, same thing, and that's only a couple hundred dollars. Election Day expenses, those, you know, those are, you know, it depends, here again, in 2021, they were very high because of the need for all the processing and absentee ballots. We're hoping that doesn't happen this year, we're hoping that, you know, it's, you know, even if it's a no absent, no, no excuse absentee ballot, at least you won't be sending out as many ballots through the mail and then them coming back in, and that required a huge increase in staffing. And referendum primary, here again, last year, there were no primaries or referendums. This year, I'm pretty sure there'll be a couple, because, you know, I don't know of any at the gubernatorial level on either party right now, but there could be one with the Republicans on the Senate, and from what I've heard down the underticket, there's always usually a couple, so we have to prepare for that possibly. You know, that's something if we need to reduce, we could a little later on, but right now, it's an unknown.
I just have one comment. It says they were including money for a possible state audit. Anna, do you know when we last had a state audit?
They, they couldn't even tell us when they last had a state audit, but it's a possibility that could happen, so I would be much comf, if we wanted to reduce by that little bit amount, that'd be fine. That's something, if it popped up, we could always go to contingency for.
Yeah.
I think they pick random municipalities to check, you know, Secretary State's office, yes, so you don't know if you're going to be it.
Right.
And which, which line was that?
402.
402.
402.
It looks like...
I wouldn't...
Looks like you'd reduced it by $10,000.
Yeah, I reduced it by 10 already, but, you know, if we, if we wanted to take, you know, here again, 2022 had 5, had seven, if we wanted to cut that by, let's say, $5,000, and here again, if they get audited, to me, that'd be a perfect, the chance of that are not very high, we could go to that, so would there be a motion to reduce and budget 110 registrars under Section 500 elections? Line forward to a motion to reduce that from 20 to 15,000?
Yeah, I would make...
Okay, Ann?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to reduce under, what is it, Section 110 registrars, under 500 elections, Section 402 referendum primary, the amount requested from 20,000 to 15,000.
Okay, it's been moved by Ann, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Same as I say, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? It carries? Just writing this down to make sure.
Can, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the dollar amount.
5,000.
Okay, thank you.
Reduction.
5,000 reduction, right.
So if we find these going through here, you're going to want to make a motion for each one, or you want to just collect them to the end and then...
I think this is the, I, I, if we do it now, then it, or we, I see what you mean, do the, the whole thing and then come back and do the...
We got a track, I think it's as we're doing it.
As we're doing it.
I think as we're doing it, then it's time, because then we come back.
Yeah.
Okay. We can always still go back and...
Just a question in the form of a question.
No, that's fine.
Go with a valid answer.
Okay. I just make sure I write everything down, so...
So where there's been consensus on something that First Selectmen has suggested, because we've had some of that so far, how we're handling that as consensus and...
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, we haven't added or subtracted to anything, so, because, you know, we're going to come back and revisit the First Selectmen part.
Yes.
But, you know, you know, if there's a consensus, but I think if it's, if we're going to actually do something, we ought to make sure then Anna's got something that she's got a hold on, too, rather than...
Right, right.
Because I think what would happen is if we kept, kept your balance and went back and did, well, now that we, why don't we go back and then Anna's going to have to go, you know, keep jostling back and forth, so. Hey, moving on, judge of probate, I think that's fairly easy, that's just strictly...
Yes.
Maintenance of town buildings, I, this is what Joe presented to us regarding, you know, you know, the increase in custodial, and I think he did a good job of explaining that, but same thing with service contracts.
I did have one question on the custodial. Library and somebody else has a weekend custodian. Why are they on a separate budget and not all included in the budget?
Because, okay, the overtime, well, on the schedule, Parks and Rec and Library split the cost of paying the overtime custodians on Saturday and Sunday.
Why?
Because...
It all comes out of the same bucket at the end, right?
Yeah, but, but their budgets get charged for it, because they're the ones requesting the services for those two days, that's why.
So they don't have a custodian during the week? They only have it on the weekend?
No, they have one all week, but they'd like, they want one, in fact, they had even asked for that weekend coverage to be done under ARP.
Yeah.
But, but here again, it's been, it was a request by Parks and Rec and Library to have a custodian there on, because the other town facilities don't, that's the only one that does. And it does, and it does require overtime, because it's, people are working beyond there, because that's offered to, you know, that's on a rotating basis.
We actually had that discussion at a very recent meeting of the ARP Subcommittee, because the request, that request was made, and Joe, Joe's explanation, well, Lisa Timothy made the request on behalf of Parks and Rec and her and Library, and then subsequently in the meeting, Joe did say that part of the thinking was that on Saturdays, it's very Parks and Rec program-driven, the folks that come in, so he's thinking of it as more of, it's almost like it should come out of those, those fees that are paid for, for programming. Less of an argument, maybe, sound, sound argument with respect to Library on those, it's four hours, I believe, on Sunday, that Library is responsible for the overtime. But those, but the overtime on, on Saturday, that's how he's viewed it, I guess, and, I guess we've done it that way for a bit, I know, I...
Yeah, it just seems like one of those, well, that's why we always did it, but, moving on.
I think it's an interdepartmental issue.
Yes.
Yeah, but if the senior center used extra gas, we wouldn't expect them to pay for the extra gas, right? It still comes out of the same budget.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else under Department 113? Okay, 114 miscellaneous government miscellaneous and benefits, Anna, that would be you if there's any questions. This is all the workers' comp, FICA pension, you know, health, dental care, and so forth like that. Any questions on that? Anna, any hope that at least, I know every so often, we hear, we get good news on healthcare before the budget gets forwarded, so...
So typically, somewhere in the April timeframe, we get absolute final word on what, what the projected increase for next, for subsequent years. At this point, the information that we've received from the state is 8%, so that's what I'm carrying in the budget.
Okay, so we'll wait for better news from you at some point in time, none of that...
We're expecting better news.
We're waiting, hoping. Okay, any further questions on government miscellaneous and benefits?
Yes, under 238, conservation. We don't have a conservation commission. We have inland wetlands, and we have natural resources.
I think that's what those come out of, we just haven't, I think that goes back to when it used to be, you know, but that's for the conservation line item, as you can see, we do have expenditures from there in the past and so forth like that.
Okay, as long as that's clear.
Any other questions? Moving on to zoning commission.
You skipped 115.
I did, I may have, oh, I did, Services to Community, I'm sorry.
Okay, see, on this one, I'm on the Subcommittee for the ARP Fund, and so a lot of these, it looks like five or six of them have requested money through ARP, so my idea was that we should reduce the money that they're receiving here in the budget and reward them through the, you know, ARP funds. You know, like, some of them are requesting, you know, like TBCCA was requesting like $20,000, Brian Dago Foundation is requesting $60,000. I don't know ultimately what be, but what will be rewarded, however, you know, the amounts we're giving them here are pretty, pretty nominal.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, do, okay, and, and both ends, so this would be a question for the two, do you want to do that tonight, or would you like, you're, you're having a meeting tomorrow, would you like to hold off until you have a chance to discuss it further? Because I, I think we'd like to, I would like to know what would they, would they be probably getting, if that's a possibility, because let's say TBCCA is, we're giving them 1,650, and if we're going to give them something significant, I don't have a problem with that, but if it's going to be, you know, just, let's say, 2,000.
A nominal amount, I understand.
Yeah, then I wouldn't want to, yeah.
Right, right. So tomorrow, tomorrow night, we're evaluating and then trying to make a recommendation on nonprofits and, and small businesses, so these fall into that category, yeah, so hopefully we'll have some better information.
We could revisit that next week.
And revisit it, yeah.
Good, really good.
Yeah, because we're, we're thinking that this, this has been so much overlap here that we need to do something.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the ARP funding potentially can touch a lot of these pages, right? Not just this page?
Well, for the town departments, exactly, yeah, and that's...
So I would, I would think that we're going to need to come up with some kind of process that says if ARP funding is awarded, then we're going to want to go back and revisit our budgets.
Oh, we'll go back and revisit, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I think the only reduction we've made so far, the registrars aren't going to be affected by an audit, that would be our, though that's a good point, so we'll come back and revisit 115, 115.
But, well, I mean, I, that makes sense relative to next week, but in terms of other departments, I'm not sure that this board is really going to have that information before you're moving to pass the budget along to the Board of Finance.
Because that's...
Because that's a March 16th day that we're, that we as the Subcommittee are supposed to present to the Board of Selectmen our recommendations, both community-wise and town request-wise, so, right.
And this budget, the Board of, Selectmen's budget goes to the Board of Finance on March 9.
So they won't have the ARP decisions. This one, this page, I'd feel comfortable doing, no, because this is, you know, we have the, the ARP decision, actually, they get a cover too, but I'm sure that's something we'd all be on, this would be a good one there too, but I think it's a good point, other ones, we won't know, finance can always make those decisions.
Yes, that's true, I mean, they're gonna be getting that same information, recommendation.
But this, we can probably deal with.
Yeah, this will be an easy one.
Yeah.
'Cause the timing works.
Uh, moving on, zoning? Uh, planning, I'm sorry.
Zoning, zoning, right.
No, zoning, yeah, you wanna do, I flipped the top lever and I, yeah, okay, it's zero, so is there any, any concern, I mean, that's exactly the same, so. And then we move on to planning. Everything is 1%, and that's just for, and Gary anticipates more prof, conferences and conventions and conferences, because there's a requirement now for board members, commission members in planning and zoning and inland wetlands to get some training now, so there's a requi, you know, necessity for that, so. Nothing on that, planning? We'll move on to.
Finance.
Finance. This is up a lot, I mean, I don't know, Anna. Any questions for Ann on this?
Is Edmonds the only place that we can do the car assessments, there's no other source of? Right, you've got this, this $48,000 is because of Edmond, oh, 7K, 7K of that's from Edmonds. Your miscellaneous office equipment, I'm sorry, 200, 215.
I think that was upgrading the accounting system.
Right, so a portion of it will be transitioning over the next year from our existing system to the Munis system, and then in addition to that, there's also support for the new time and attendance system.
And we said that potentially it could be ARP funded, it's on your list of things to be.
The, 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 the installation.
The installate, the purchase and installation of the NovoTime system was part of the ARP funds, but ongoing, we have ongoing annual support, and that's, that's what's reflected here in the budget.
Okay, but my question, I guess, was, your narrative said that 7,000 of this is going to Edmonds for updates on car values.
Not, not car values.
I think Edmonds, I just think of car values, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's our existing software, so I'm gonna need one more year of maintenance on that, you know, as we transition from that system to the new system.
I read Edmonds, and I just thought that that's what we use to estimate the car values, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any further on finance? Next one is contingency, which, as you can see, we have a very large increase in the town payroll pending changes and so forth like that. Before, I'm hop, we already have one of the unions who has agreed to, as I said, to a year extension, but that's a, that's the smallest one, that's six members. Another union has indicated a desire to, a willingness to look at just a one year, so we might be able to recognize some more possible savings in that, but we still have, the largest union upshue is one we'll be negotiating. I would think by the time May comes around, I'm hoping we'll have a better idea, but for us, it's, it'd be, I don't, I don't think it'd be appropriate to try and indicate what, you know, if we could reduce that right now, I'd like to leave that as it is. And here again, I think Anna is making sure that we're well-covered here in the, you know, regarding settlements and so forth like that, so. Comments on, on that?
My comment, I think, is that we have conservativeness, I think, built into a lot of places in this budget, and it's a pretty significant increase. So doesn't make sense to have conservativeness everywhere, and there's some areas that we can say, you know what, we've got the 15% fund balance, which is higher than it's ever been, I know, I remember back when it was six or seven.
I know, it hit seven one year, and we were excited, yeah, I, I can remember those times.
So I just, it, it just feels to me like this is such a big budget increase this year, it's, to me, it feels huge.
It doesn't feel, it is, it's.
To have conservativeness in a bunch of different places, it sounds like, you know, redundant conservativeness and belt and suspenders and bailing wire and tape and da-da-da-da-da. It just feels like we need to not have so much buffer in the budget, and maybe this is one place that we need to say, you know what, we've got the number that we used for this, maybe we need to back that off a little bit and understand that we're at risk, that we might have to touch the fund balance, but that's okay, that's what it's here for.
Part of having a larger fund balance too, though, is that you get better bonding rates.
Yes, you do.
So, you know, you, you save money that way.
Yeah, but if you're at the 15%, and I know what Bill's saying, if we look as, you know, and, you know, you know, like, what we're hearing with the tax sale and, and the conveyance today, it does look good for us, and we'll know better too, we'll have the grand list in a few days, we'll have a much better idea. How about if Anna and I work on this one?
That's just, it is.
Let us, Anna, you and I can talk about this a little bit and see if we can come down, because you're right, you, you see, I, last year, there was no contract, so you didn't really have to have a lot of money set aside into payroll contingency. This year, with all of them, we, we're gonna have to have a sizable amount, because we, we don't know, but, okay, well, let's take a look at it and get back to you on that one.
And, and remember, if, if we had all of our contracts in place, there would be no budget here, it would have been disseminated throughout all of the different departments, so there were no salary increases, there are a few here and there for various reasons, but.
And it just means if that 470, 427 is the right number, it would just be sprinkled out through all the different departments, and I'm saying, if we think that that number's really not 427, we think it's 400, can we take credit for that 27, you know, and you guys can do your magic.
Understood.
Okay.
It just, like I said, I just, I just look at this overall budget increase, and it just hurts.
There are a couple places where we've added hours or positions where it looks like overtime will be reduced, so, you know, that may, I mean, that may impact that number as well.
Yeah, I asked that question a couple of times, where you're adding positions but not decreasing overtime.
No, I mean, there are certain ones that don't, but there are some that, for example, when Police Chief gave his information about adding, and he, he was pretty clear about overtime being reduced as a part of that new structure, so. I'm just thinking about what, what is in this 427,000.
All right, let.
Yeah, you guys can.
Well, you know, I think, I think Anna and I can take a look at that and see if we can come, come back to some numbers, different numbers. And here, you know, and, and we are meeting with the labor attorney early next week, so that might give you a much better idea too, so we'll turn to that.
And like I say, some of it's just risk management, and it's like, how much of a risk do you pay, and do you know that you have somewhere else to fall back on, is the difference in the bond rate between 14 and 1/2% and 15%, where's that threshold that says it truly has a financial impact? And is this year the year that we say, you know what, 15 is really ideal, but we can survive with 14 and 1/2?
And here again, and that decision is ultimately the Board of Finance too, so, as, everybody that, or on this side of me, everybody to my right knows that, actually, we all know that, so. Okay, moving on, Board of Finance budget is just up a little for audit services, which is contracted, that's it. Zoning Board of Assessment actually came down. I mean, Board of Assessment Appeals came down.
And that's related, of, of course, to revow.
Right, revow, will be, it won't be there next year, so. Zoning Board of Appeals, number 130, that stays exactly the same. Inland Wetlands comes down a little bit. 133 Waterford, the East Lime Shellfish, stays exactly the same. Then moving on to 134 Brookside Farm Museum Commission, they have not used any of their curator money as of right now, and they, I talked to Gary Lakowski, he's hoping for at least the summer, they may have an intern. My guess is, I don't think for a couple months, the intern's gonna make $6,000, so I don't know if that's something we'd like to look at, I, I would, you know, as far as the landscaping, maintenance and so forth, I wouldn't wanna touch that. Utilities, definitely those really aren't, but I don't know if that's something we, we have cut that in the past and then restored it, but they have, like I said, except they haven't had a curator in quite some time, so I don't know if that's something anybody would like, it's such a small amount of money.
It's such a small amount, and last year, I think, there was a misunderstanding about when all that was happening, and Board of Finance reduced it, and then we had to kind of reinstate it, if I'm not mistaken, so I just wanna be clear if, you know, that he needs it or doesn't need it for, for the year in question here, you know, 'cause that, that was a little bit of a mix-up last year, it sounds like it could go in that direction.
Yeah. Well, here again, too, I mean, you, you think, I said, if he has somebody for two and a half months, $6,000 is not much money, so, okay.
He had to work hard to get it into the budget in the first budget.
Yes, he very much did, well, we remember the years, it wasn't, nothing in there.
And then next year, when there's a big increase.
Yeah, it's, it's fine, they may have need of it going forward.
Okay, Town Building Committee, actually, a reduction. And Harvard Management stays at the same as it always does. Moving on to 138 Conservation and Natural Resources. That's nine, it, it's not even 100, it's a 9% increase, but it's, it's not even $100, so. Same thing with the Historic Properties Commission, everything in that, it's actually down, you know, 1/100 of a percent, down a dollar, so. Service contracts. Next one is moving on, this one would be a little more involved, Public Safety Emergency Management. The director is set by contract, same thing with the deputy, 311, that's set by contract, shift, longevity and shift difference, that's longevity for Julie, she's got that in there. EOC Staff Activation, we haven't done that, because we really haven't had an EOC in the, for the last, well, it has been, it's up and running now, it's in there, there's a good chance we won't need that, but, you know, that's, Anna, there's no expense in that for this year, I don't believe either, is there? For EOC activation? But here again, too, we haven't had a drill in quite a while either, so drills do run into an expense, and there are usually a couple.
There was a small expense.
Yeah, so. So I don't know if you wanna touch that.
I thought Millstone paid for part of that.
They do, but as far as with the activation, we do have some expenses required by us. And here again, we, we, you know, looking back, we probably, I'm trying to think if we would have activated the EOC during the storm, we, we probably would have, going back, you know, a month ago when we had the heavy snowstorm, but that's when we were in transition, really didn't have a place to activate it, so. It wasn't done. And I think, as you can see, with, it does it with the, there, there is a, a pretty big increase in miscellaneous supplies, but the write-up on page two of the, pretty much describes what all that is used for.
It was that Everbridge communication, that was a big.
And it's also printer, 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 three different line items.
So on the Everbridge, the initial funding for that is through one of the Millstone grants that we receive. For next year, they're submitting to request that that 7,500 be covered under that grant program, however, we don't get notified about that grant program until June, so the budget process has, has come and gone, so it's a dilemma of a sort.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could take, we have, I don't wanna say we never get it, but we, we, I mean, we, we never, we always get it, but the one year we don't budget for would be the year we might not see it, so.
There is an exposure there.
Yeah. Line under operating expenses.
We don't get any money from the Department of Homeland Security?
For?
I thought that, as a result of Millstone, I thought that we, at one point, were getting some money from the Homeland, Department of Homeland Security, but I don't see it here.
We do, we do get a grant from Dominion and.
So there's two grant sources, through the NSEF program and the EMTG program. There, you know, we submit grant, we, applications.
Anything further on emergency management and public safety?
No, I think we had a very detailed presentation.
Yes.
On that, we had an opportunity to question.
Moving on to dispatchers. Do I have the up-to-date, did, Anna, did you restore the funding for the, for two full, for two dispatchers, 'cause I had meant, we had one and a half, and then everybody kind of said the thing that they would like to see go back to two.
No.
Okay.
It's because.
Hold on, Ann.
Can I just say, I actually was, I wasn't, at that meeting, I was just listening, but I would agree that we should hire one dispatcher in July and one in January, and the reason I'm saying this, 'cause I've been thinking about this, is when you hire a new person, it takes them about six months to get up to speed, so if you have two people who don't know what they're doing, it's a lot harder. In my office, we've hired two secretaries at the same time, same, and it's much more confusing, where if you hire one, you kind of get them up to speed, and then, once they're in, then you hire somebody else and get them, you know, up to speed and keep going from there. So that's why I think it's better to hire one, you know, stagger it six months.
Well, why wouldn't it be more efficient to hire, to train both of them at the same time?
Because you have two people who don't know what they're doing, and just, just get, 'cause we, I've done it both ways in my office, and it, it just, it's just not as efficient, and they're not as productive, 'cause you get two people who don't know what they're doing, versus when you have somebody who can say, okay, here, this is what you do, get them up to speed, and then you bring the next person on.
But is it, is it less of a competency issue and more of a, a coverage issue, thank you, where the issue is trying to have those two bodies? Thank you, where the issue is trying to have those two bodies, two dispatchers from, what is it, 11 to 7?
Yeah, it's, it's the 11 to 7 shift where we currently go with just one.
Right, so if you hire, if you do a mid-year hiring, there's still those months where you're gonna be in the same situation, which is not covering with two people on the night shift, I think.
And you compare someone with experience that's the new hire. In other words, you probably wouldn't want to have both of them.
Together, right.
Usually for the probationary period, you don't have, you would not have, the two, the two new people would not be working together. And in fact, we just had a dispatcher leave, a great opportunity to go somewhere else and left. And we did get one of the part-timers that has stepped up, so, you know, that one, you don't miss a beat, but you don't know. But we, that, that's not, either of these two, so you don't know. A lot of times, people with experience do apply for these, someone who's had a background in that. But here again, you don't know, so. But the concern I have is, and that's where I, when I did mention to cut it back to one and a half, is to get the training up. It's not the same training, it's not as if you go away to an academy or anything like that for dispatching, but it does take a while to learn what to do and something like that. And having dispatched, you know, that first time something serious happens, you want to be sure you've got someone with you who can, you know, help to get you through it. But I think that second person is essential, because if you're by yourself and something happens to that individual, or, you know, you're in the same building as the police officers, but they're not gonna be there all the time, not always gonna be there. So, I think that second dispatcher, not only for the safety's wellbeing, but for liability, everything else, having two dispatchers on at all time is pretty essential. And the only way we can do that without more overtime, and that, there's one shift you hate to get told you have to stay for, and that's a midnight shift, I can, I've been there, it's awful. Is that, so I would support staying with the two dispatchers there, even though I was the one that initially cut it back to one and a half.
It's all your fault.
So, I agree that bringing in a new person when they first start, it's like you're removing some time, because the person that's training somebody is less of a person. They're spending some percentage of their time training, so if you got two people training, you've got that same percentage being removed. But I don't understand how long it takes for a dispatcher to train, to get up to a competent level. Because odds are, you're not gonna hire both the same people the same week. It's gonna take a certain amount of time to get people in anyway, and competent people, and maybe you'll get experienced people, maybe you won't. So, I only, my challenge is, is the $28,000. I mean, we keep adding, we keep adding, we keep adding to the budget that's already huge. I'd like to challenge to find an offset, somewhere within the Police Department, to find that $28,000 offset. Because it's all general safety, it's not directly out of the police budget, but somewhere in here, I would hope that the chief could find $28,000. So, I understand and I agree that training two people at the first same time is, is a bigger challenge. But I think that, like I said 15 times so far, I think is, I just feel like this budget is, is already challenged, and adding money for this, and adding money for that, and adding money for the other thing. It just gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and it doesn't seem like we're really doing our job to make sure that we're not, we're spending the town's money wisely. Efficiently.
Efficiently and wisely is difficult, but there is, you know, and the thing is, here again, we're talking public safety, and if I dial 911 at 3:00 in the morning, and that one dispatcher is helping somebody through CPR, and then another emergency comes in, which one do you abandon?
I don't disagree.
And, and the thing is.
This section, I said, I've worked third shift by myself, and working third shift by yourself is hard.
Working, yeah, with a lot of people, it's still hard, too.
Your bio rhythms are just out funky someplace, and you're by yourself, and things just seem weird. So, I fully support having two people there 24/7, especially on the second shift, or third shift. But I just, I'm hard pressed to come up with $28,000.
Okay, we can leave this right where it is, and, you know, here again, this is deliberations, we don't have to make, that's why we're gonna go back on this next Wednesday night, too. I can have us sit down with the chief and talk about some of the concerns raised here. I mean, that's why we have these.
They should be able to understand whether or not they can train two people at the same time or not. They're better to speak to.
Well, yeah, you know, dispatcher is, you know, because a police officer, once you get told, yes, you can do this, and it's adopted, okay, not, you don't even start the hiring process till then, and, you know, that can be, as we've seen this year, we're finally, the ones we authorized to be hired last year aren't even by themselves yet. You know, they, they've gone to the academy, they're doing well, but there is a required, there's specifications of how long a police officer has to stay on field training officer program.
Dispatcher's quicker than that, no?
No, dispatcher's not, much quicker than that, yeah.
Historically, what do we have for dispatchers? Do we normally have?
We normally have two, first and second shift, Monday, 24, I mean, seven days a week. Third shift, we have one on a shift, just one on from 11 to 7 at night.
And for, like, historically, for how, is that how it's always been?
Actually, how it's always been was, there's been times when it was one, one, and one, and then it went to one, two, and one. And then, as we became our own police department, first and second shift went to two and two. Because, you know, you know, like I said, I kept the police world, and we had a dispatcher and a desk officer, a trooper on there. So, you had two people on there, but you're only handling police calls. And there, they're handling fire and police calls. And during the day, they're also answering the town crew, they're on the radio frequency, so they're, they're doing everything else during, on day shifts, so there's a lot more traffic then. So, you know, it's, it's very challenging. You know, on the midnight shift, you don't, you don't have, obviously, the, the traffic that you would normally have during the day. But, you know, it's, how do you know what night, it's not gonna be busy, you know?
Also, you know, you, we've got Gateway now, we have more and more 55-plus communities, and there's, the volume of calls that are coming into that center, it's, it's, it can be overwhelming at times. And a lot of it is what they call lithocyst, you have someone that's fallen, and they need to send a crew out there, and, and they need someone to dispatch it. And that can happen 20, any, you know, middle of the night, someone gets up, and they're elderly, and they fall, and they've got a, they've got a dispatch situation. We're not the same town, but we're, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. This is an absolute necessity, and it's crucial, I think, at this point. I mean, there may be some other place, you know, as Bill suggested, that that money can, some other adjustments that can be made to help fund it. But that line item is, I think, absolutely essential, essential if we're gonna be doing our job right here, I think.
Okay, okay, I could talk to the chief on dispatch, and also on the next section, 216, to where if, you know, is there some areas he can identify in there and so forth like that?
But this is another one where he's adding a person, but he's not decreasing part-time or overtime, so he may be able to just kind of.
Well, that's, that's just, I can, I can talk to him about that, because if, if you're adding that money back into the full, to the, to the, full-time dispatchers being added, you should be able to decrease the amount of money someplace else. So, I can go back and visit that with him, we'll sit down and talk, that's, you know, good questions, so. Okay, it's 9:00, it's been two hours, and, you know, I don't want to get to the point where, so. Do we want to cover the next line, 216 Police Safety, the Public Safety Police Department, and make this our last one for tonight? Okay.
Darren, I was looking forward to Animal Control.
Do this and Animal Control.
What? Okay, the police chief, as we've talked about, is contractual, Administrative Assistant is, is basically contractual right now, but here again, these will be affected. And that overtime for Administrative Assistant, longevity, part-time clerical, that's the person that's in the record section. And then the part-time, 511 is police officers, there's two officers in there. And each officer is roughly one, Anna, I think, well, we can see right there is.
Are we in part, did you say part-time?
No, no, 511, police.
You're 511?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anywhere with the police we could stagger them, at least so that maybe it would cut down a little bit on the cost? Or does that have to be?
No, because, well, it's not unusual sometime, the thing would be is if you open up, sometimes if you advertise, and you run to a direct hire or a lateral transfer for another department, sometimes you can get somebody quick that way, saves some money. So, you might be able to get two fairly quick with a lateral transfer, but, you know, the last couple we've had, last several we've had, few had have gone through the academy process, so, but, you know, that's always.
So, we budgeted $128,065 for the two new officers. We included one at step one, and then we also included one at step three, which would be a lateral.
A lateral transfer, so. Here again, while I, you know, if that's a concern, let me talk to chief, think about the one and a half ice two. The question I think would be, too, is if we did that, we want, I think that, like to make sure that we're not the last one to make a reduction. If we said, okay, we're not comfortable, but we will, I don't want to say, well, Mike, the Department of Finance will say, well, let's just make it one and knock it all the way down. I think he's demonstrated, you know, with his chart and that, what you get with that second officer. And, you know, if it was two direct hires or new hires, yeah, there's a good chance you'd probably get one in at one time, and several months later, when another academy class would start, you'd probably get them, because sometimes it's hard to get two in the same class. And the only reason we did this past year is because someone didn't, at the last minute, another town didn't use the slot, and we were able to grab it. So, that's how we got two out of the last class. And that was because we, we had the one plus a retirement, so that's why we were able to get both of them in fairly quickly.
I have a couple of questions before we end. We talked about the possibility of grant rider, what budget would we put that in?
Well, can we finish with this budget first?
Oh, I thought we were done.
Oh, no, I wanted to go through any other ones here, and I, and I have an idea for that, too, so. Part-time officers, there's a contract that tells us how much has to be in there for the part-time officer. And if you'll notice it, he probably will go over again, but when the part-time officer works beyond his hours, he's actually saving us money, because if, he'll come in and work a shift, which means it isn't paid on an overtime basis, because he doesn't ever work, he'll get, he'll sometimes work a highway job, which is paid by another source, not by the town. But his working doesn't, actually, actually saves us some money, because then he's getting paid at his rate. And I believe he gets paid at the lowest.
Step one.
Step one, so that does save us some money. Foot patrol parade duty, I wouldn't want to adjust that, because we have Celebrated Lime Day coming back this year. Overtime, here again, Bill, that's something, okay, if we're gonna hire a couple of people, should we look at that, so.
So, your part-time didn't go down, your overtime didn't go down, your part-time boat didn't go down, but you've got two new people. It just doesn't feel right.
And in his report, or his narrative that chief handed out, he did say, having an additional officer assigned to shifts reduces incidence of overtime on the 10 shifts due to staffing above minimum patrol, so.
Okay, good, good point, really good points to bring up and discuss with him over the next week.
I do have one other thing on this budget.
Yes.
The DUI grant, we don't, we're not getting those any longer. And I also found out that they were being eliminated at state level, which seems to me a bit ridiculous. But would it be worth our while to draft, to draft a letter to our state representative and senator to ask to get that brought back? Because if that was brought back, that would take off some of our expenses for overtime. Because remember, if they're on the road, they're covering.
Well, and here again, I understand that, that's only because I had to get these grants as well, when, and sale. You can respond to back someone up, but you're not considered, you're not the primary responder to someone like that, because you're, and they do look at that, and you don't want to adversely affect it, so. It's not as if it, it supplements patrol, it's, it's own patrol. But here again, if there's a traffic stop or something that needs backup, they can, you know, obviously, for officer's safety, there's not a problem doing that. I can, I can reach out to Holly and Paul and see, see what the thinking is behind that at the state level, and come back with an explanation, and we'll see if we can do that.
Well, it does give us extra eyes on the road.
I think, well, part of it may be that it's just, there's been cultural changes since COVID. You look at liquor store sales, people are drinking at home, they're not going to the clubs and out driving. And so, I think there's probably been a reduction in people that are driving intoxicated, they're staying at home. So, I guess that's a good thing.
That's coming around now, we're starting to get more people out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, maybe the thinking will change in Hartford.
I, I think people are ready to.
Get out.
I told people aren't ready to drink and drive.
So, if I just might point out, in terms of the DUI grants, we primarily will leave that line item in the budget in the event that a grant does become available, and that way, it gives us the opportunity to have some startup funds in the, you know, because there's always a lag between going through the appropriations process for the grant and, and all of that. So, that's why we, we budget that as a placeholder, but if you look on the revenue side, we also have a $10,000 number there. So, if we don't spend anything, don't get the, I mean, it kind of nets out to zero. So, it just kind of gives us a little bit more flexibility with the budget by including the $10,000 there.
Okay, anything else on the police budget? Okay, I'll talk to them about the one and a half ice two, and the, the part-time, like I said, the part-time officers, the 1304 is a contractual thing, it specifies hours per month that have to be there for the part-time officer. He can work beyond that, but, and again, he has to work it, I mean, there's, there's a couple of months a year, he might not work much at all, but.
And I thought there was probably some of that baked into the overtime, right, when people were guaranteed a certain number of overtime.
No, actually, no one's guaranteed any overtime, but, but here again, it's gonna happen, you know that. And with, and back in 2021, when the part-time officer made, you know, substantially more than was in the, than is required for him, he really helped save some overtime that year, because we had some people out injured, short-staffed, so he was coming in on a huge.
Five and a half, and that's.
Yeah, yeah.
If I may, also, in, in the Police Department, unfortunately, every year, we do experience some, you know, injuries on the job, so we have officers that are out on workers' comp, so that's one of the things that drives overtime. Like, right now, unfortunately, we have a sergeant out, and he's gonna be out for several months. And so, that's gonna drive overtime as well, because we're always gonna have his shifts to fill at the sergeant level.
Yeah, there's, twice a week when, there's, there's three days a week when that will require, at a minimum, three, three days a week, it will require an overtime sergeant to work, because there's an overlap. Basically, every, the first and last day of your shift, there's an overlap, and that's a great time, if you want to have a day off, to do it. Well, the three days in the middle now will have, those will be covered, but the three days in the middle, we'll have to look out at overtime for that.
But I'm gonna believe that that's been true for many, many years, is that.
No, that, that's, yeah.
People get hurt, there's people that go on vacation, there's people that get sick. I think that should be baked into the formula already, that there's always gonna be, you know, people out for some percent of the time. We used to actually use 15%, assume that you're only gonna be working 85% of the time, and 15% of the time, somebody's gonna be either at training or up to other things. So, if you're looking for questions for this, I know this budget includes new radios, new uniforms, and new guns. uniforms and new guns. Is there somewhere in the budget that covers new cars?
They take care of their own car, basically, when they work a highway job, there's a charge on that for the use of the vehicle, separate from anything else. It more than covers the cost of the officer, his fringe costs benefits as well, and then there's an added cost just for the use of the car, and that gets put into an account, and that's what we purchase those cars with, so.
I understand that, it's that account right now, they've got enough money in it that they can buy the new cars.
Yes.
Not just the regular rotation that they do all the time, but it can also throw in a couple of new cars.
And it, wait a minute, two new cars in addition to the cars they would normally get?
Yeah. You got two new, two new officers, right, so you don't need two new cars?
No, no, because here again, you usually will use, it's not like a, I was lucky, you know, when you're a state trooper, you get your car, but the town guys, the, the chief does, the two lieutenants do, and the two detectives do. Outside of that, no one has off-duty use of the vehicle or takes their car home, so we do not need, won't need two new vehicles for them. Usually, usually you will drive the same car every day when you work, but a couple other people will drive that car on the off-shift, on, on the, on the, for instance, I'll, I'll drive one from eight to four, someone else will drive that same car from four to twelve.
Okay, I guess I'm not saying this right. If right now on first shift, you have four people working, and you got four cars, now you're gonna add a fifth person.
There's, there's enough vehicles.
See, there's extra cars?
Yes.
Okay, that's right, okay.
In fact, there's a couple of vehicles, well, that are, the one that was rear-ended, I guess, it was not that old of a vehicle, it was totaled, so, and here again, the, the lead time, the cars that were, here again, same thing with the garbage truck and the fire truck, the police vehicles that were authorized or purchased last year in, in the budget, we haven't got, we've just.
We just took delivery of one.
It's just unbelievable.
Why they're driving Subarus this year, because they're available. The only other question I had, I was gonna ask this question during the IT section, but because the police I know, he said he's gonna replace all the computers, he's got a grant to get new computers for the whole building. What do we do with our old computers? Do we sell them?
I don't know. My, my guess is, I'm not really sure, especially if it comes out of the police department, because you wonder, because there's always that thought that you can't get everything off of a disk, I don't know that, but I don't know what we do with our, our old computers.
Cause.
I know with, with our old cruisers, our old vehicles, our old, pretty much everything, we try to sell it, and in today's world, there might be a market for it, especially if we use cars now.
Yeah, even if you just have to change out the hard drive.
Okay.
A new IT guy maybe can sell, he can add a revenue item in here for, I don't know how many computers they're getting, but even if they're a couple of hundred dollars apiece, it's, you know, still a couple thousand dollars.
Social revenue.
I like revenue.
We all do. That's why when I heard yesterday, I mean, I, so Kevin told me, one of the tax sale people came in and paid thirty-nine thousand, then a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so, you know, that was really good, you know, I'm trying to think what other big facility in town needs to be sold really, really quick, so. You know, and, and, you know, Bill brings out a really good point with, you know, this is a challenging budget, but I think we've looked at, we've looked at the fact that over the last few years, we've been so, so careful in spending money that, especially, you know, I've seen it in here, in town hall, just, you know, the, another one and a half persons would just make it, the operation so much easier, and ease the burden, and the HR, tax collect, I had a town clerk, when, if Sandy takes a day off, somebody, that person could work from, in, in that office, so it would just ease some of the stresses that are going on in here significantly.
I think it's clear there's a lot of stress with Manpower right now, right, but we're talking about adding two police officers.
Oh, no.
An IT person, a new dispatcher, a new firefighter, increase human resources time, an assistant building official, it just seems like there's a lot of, this year we gotta catch up, and we're trying to catch up everywhere at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
And it just, and, and that's where I think the pressure's coming from, is we're just trying to make up for the amends of past years.
Okay. And here again, too, you know, you know, and like I said, we can justify this very easily, but it comes down to what can we afford. I mean, it's the same thing with, with your home, you need a lot of stuff in your house, but not now.
And that's where the grant list is gonna have a lot to do with, this is what's the actual impact in revenue, and is it gonna offset, and if it offsets, then great, we can catch up this year. If it doesn't.
Yeah, and here again, is, we'll, we'll know by next Wednesday where we stand with the grant list as well.
Yeah, but this is the town side, you also have the board of education.
Right.
Which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the total eight point four million, three point four of it's the board of ed, right? Or the three point four million, I'm sorry.
Four point six nine percent.
I got those numbers backwards, three point four million. Two point four, three point four is board of ed. Yeah, two point four, the three point four is board of ed. So right now, we can just talk about what we can talk about.
Right. You know, I mean, and I think you brought up some good points, and, you know, this is, this is why it was really good to have, so, I know sometimes we've only had really one night to deliberate, this way we've brought up some good questions, so we can come back and address some of the concerns that have been brought up. You know, you know, I, I think, you know, for me, a real, real top priority is the two dispatchers, because that, that's not only fire, police officer safety, but, you know, our residents as well for, you know, because all you know is when you hit nine one one, you wanna be sure that you get somebody on the phone that can not only, you know, start getting services there, but if you need them to stay on the line with you, they can, so, you know, so.
I have a couple of other things before we go. I asked if we, we're gonna consider the grant rider, what budget would we include that in?
And here again, too, I, but we'd have to look at what kind of grants, and here again, we're talking about the challenges on the budget, that, especially with all the grants under the, you know, the, the infrastructure, there's certainly several grants, there's some of those, I've, I've reached out to the Southeast Atlantic House of Governments to see what they have, as far as resources, just someone can get on a per diem basis.
Yeah, their, their website that I saw, a link to a grant rider.
Yeah.
You gotta fill out some stuff.
Yeah.
Fill it out.
Yeah.
But I think that would be the best way to go.
And for our subcommittee that's working on the rescue funds, the idea of the bathrooms, would that, something like that be eligible under those funds?
Which bathroom?
Public health, we're charged by the need for some public.
Oh, yes, there's a request.
I think it was a request, actually.
Yes, it's a request.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it was a request.
Yep, there was a, a couple of requests in that regard, but others definitely, there's, there's one concerning the existing police building, but then there's one where, which is unknown, but then there's a, there's a definite request for this upper McCooks, hole in the wall, and one other.
I think it was a bribe.
Bribe, right, and so, yeah, that's, that's definitely on the, on his, his list, I suppose, Ann.
Is there anything that we discussed tonight that brought up some other ideas that might be, that might be able to be pulled off, pulled off from our regular budget for the rescue funds, after we've had our discussion tonight? Let me just look quickly.
Yeah, and I was thinking, some items might come from the capital outlays budget, more capital improvement plan listed, so that's, that's another area, but we haven't discussed those yet.
But when we went through the individual department budgets, I asked where I thought that there was inappropriate ARP funding, I asked the department heads if they were putting in for it. So, I, nothing new came to my mind tonight, but I've been trying to poke out there and see if I got.
I think where you might see the big ones is in the capital area, because that's where the bigger ticket items are, and here again, if we can reduce next year's, something out of the next year capital, and that, that helps out a lot, too.
But then we're gonna start looking at the infrastructure bill, too, but that's probably not gonna help us this year.
The infrastructure bill, we're not gonna have an answer to by the, and that's the sad thing, is, and that's competitive, so, oh, this is, this is exactly what we wanna do, but here, yeah.
And it's gonna focus on the, I would, yes, it's gonna focus on the big cities, it's not gonna be a small town.
But, but there, there are some rural components of that, too. I've been trying to dig a little further into that, I don't know if you have it as well, Ann, but, you know, it looks as if we, you know, and that's where that, that grant writing ability would have, because, you know, I've talked to Joe Bergaw and Bill Shear, there's so many areas they say, yeah, this is an area we'd love to get some grants out, but, okay, here, okay, stop what you're doing and, you know, and write a grant type of thing.
And fix the computer system while you're doing it.
We could talk about it another time, but if we know how to write a grant, I've written a lot of stuff like that, I can probably volunteer some time to do some of that.
Could a grant rider go under ARP funds?
It, it looks like it could possibly go in, you could probably set some aside, but that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
I don't know.
I think what's happening, I mean, under ARP, there are administrative costs that you, that you can have to administer, you know, your, your decisions, your allocation, your appropriation of allocated money, and then something similar, I did read about infrastructure, where, I mean, it's kind of expected that costs associated with now, you know, having to go get competitive grants for the categories that are gonna be allowed, I think that's gonna be yet another sort of covered.
Under the build back there, you're talking about?
Yes, I think so. It's hard to tell yet, and unfortunately, it's kind of unfolding, but it's not unfolding at a good time, you know, and, and we still don't, there's so much information.
Until, until the, the next last update comes.
Yes, yes.
Well, some of these grants, if we had someone who was able to do the research, a lot of the grants, you can, the grant itself can be, can be charged for the salary of the person.
Well, yeah, they, you, you, there's, basically, a person gets an administrative fee for doing that, too, but, yeah, so.
But, I mean, definitely ARP, you know, this year for us and going forward as well, because some of the infrastructure projects take time, you know, to, to complete, but in my mind, there's definitely some offset, you know, with, with the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, you know, and using the ARP funds, so it'll be interesting to look at that capital side.
Yeah, 'cause like the, I'm just looking at here, water and sewer, they have, you know, three different projects that Joe Bergaw brought up for ARP funds, one is six hundred thousand, seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, as you said, like, the, the, there's, there's, there's a, you know, the water storage compartment, to me, that, boom, that, that's where I would think, that's where we, you know, if something has to come off, that, you know, and that's for your discussion tomorrow, but.
Right.
You know, that would be the tower, the water tower that needs to be cleaned and painted.
That's seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, there's a competitive grant for that, not two, and here again, even if you don't get, let's say it, it is seven fifty, we get a grant for six hundred, that's not bad, because then you, you know, because the ratepayers, you'll have to pick up a little bit of that overtime, but, but I think that's one of the things we look for, get stuff like that, there's, you know, Bill Shear is already talking about something to enhance the visibility over the crosswalks on Main Street, too, because there's a component to increase or reduce accidents that involve pedestrians and cyclists, in specific, so that's one of the things he had. Now, the one we had a couple weeks ago on Main Street, that was simulated, so that was, you know, you know, that, that we don't call them on purpose, as we call them accidents. They are gonna happen, but here again, what can we do to help minimize them, and I think that might be where, you know, look at, you know, especially at night, walking, crossing Main Street, and now I know people come out and put their hand out, but, you know.
I know, I've come to those a couple times.
Yeah, but make sure, make sure, make sure that you see that car stopped before you walk.
On Main Street, you gotta keep this on.
No, that's just it, I always wait till you see both cars in both directions stop.
Stop, yeah.
You know, because sometimes it, it's not an intentional thing on their part, there's so much.
They don't see you.
Well, you have all that sensory overload, you have so much going on.
Cars.
Okay, anything else for tonight? I think we, you gave me some, Ann and I have a few things to do for coming back next week, so we'll finish up here next week. Anyway, if that.
Listen to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you for your comments tonight.